Our agenda. I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the adjustment of time of John being closer to nine o'clock. Okay, moving the forty-five to nine, okay. Your say?
Yes, second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, if we could stand please for our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll welcome our visitors here today, and it is public comment time on our agenda. Is there any public comment from our audience or, okay?
Just go ahead.
Go ahead and introduce yourself to Mike. I think, is Mike on? Okay, great.
Okay, my name's Jane Stenson. And some things come to to my attention that I wanted to check with you guys on. Are any of you aware of any Page County acres being signed up for solar panels? I know you're not going to answer me doing this, but those are questions. There are a number of acres who have solar contracts with Tenaska recorded at the Page County courthouse. For instance, a landowner signed up seventy-seven acres. Word has it that it's eight hundred dollars an acre payoff. That'd be sixty-one thousand six hundred acres, I mean, dollars. Is that individual going to get sixty-one thousand six hundred a year for an industrial solar plant on his seventy-seven acres? Does that make sense? A typical industrial-scale solar farm is five megawatts or less, which would take with all the equipment about four acres, so that'd be twenty acres. Twenty times eight hundred equals sixteen thousand, which is much different than that sixty-one thousand six hundred. So twenty acres for sixteen thousand dollars versus a wind turbine, three acres for six to ten thousand dollars. There's, there's quite a discrepancy there. My question is, why is Tenaska going back to people signed up for wind turbines and signing them up for solar now? Tenaska has also signed up a few people who hadn't signed up for wind. Solar panels need leveled ground. Most of the land signed up for solar is hilly. So what's up with that? Are they going to invest in moving mass amounts of dirt? Things don't make sense financially. Here's a possible scenario I thought of. Tenaska gets people who wouldn't sign up for wind to sign up for solar and has a lease on that land to do whatever they want with the underground connecting lines, since that is in the contract. Now, they have a path through that land that would not sign up for wind and can get through areas that they were unable to get through to get wind turbine land connected. This could appear to be a bait-and-switch plan. I looked it up. Tenaska has two solar plants in the U.S. They're both in California where solar could make sense. I don't know their motives, except that from the first meeting with the salesman on our patio, it was obvious that he would do and say anything for a signature to get a hold of private land. During wind turbine meetings a number of times, I heard you say, Chuck, that you see solar as a problem. I'm wondering if you guys have done any research on how you're going to approach the solar industry in Page County? Or if you've developed a solar ordinance? From the video on wind energy that is on the supervisor's page, it's obvious that you like to get your research from proponents of the wind and solar energy. I would encourage you to do your homework on both sides of the issue to get the facts that the proponents do not want you to consider. If a site, a website, is owned by any corporation or government bureaucracy promoting the industry or that stands to gain monetarily from the industry, you have to consider the source. Um, I'm not going to go into detail on these. I'll say that for another time, but just wanted to let you know that people sign up without any knowledge of the process and problems with the process, solar and wind and the results. Sometimes they don't do any research. Sometimes they don't talk to a lawyer who is knowledgeable about the subject in the contract. Some of the disadvantages in Page County are Iowa's latitude, intermittent makes them inefficient, the expense, the lay of the land, the toxicity, the storage problems, the availability of raw materials and noise. Some of that's not just Page County, that's just the industry itself. I just want to say I'm not against solar. I've, I've got a couple of boys at least talking about building, and I've said you need to look into solar for your house and see, see what it's about and see if there's a way that it would work for you. So I'm not against private solar, but I am against huge fields of solar panels and, um, so, uh, I want you to address as supervisors, the amount of Page County land that can be used for solar industrial sites. Put a cap on it immediately. I would suggest four hundred acres. Put a moratorium on solar contracts in Page County until you develop protections through a solar ordinance. By next week, I'd like to see that going on. Have public input before you make a solar ordinance official. That's, I'll hand you these notes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. Is there any other public comment here this morning?
Just a follow-up from my wife. Okay, just real quickly. And that is what I've heard from the neighbors that have been approached. We personally haven't been approached. What I've heard is they're offering eight hundred dollars an acre on eighty acres. Do the math on that. And, and they really, even though against all logic, the, the money, the, the prospect of money, I think turns us all down, you know? I'll have to admit, I, that's what I was thinking too. Eighty acres times eight hundred, how's, how's anybody going to be able to turn that down? But what we have to do is, is think of it in, uh, they, they phrased it in a different way. With the turbines, it was per turbine, and it only took up, what, a couple acres or so in a lot of instances? Uh, but now they're putting it per acre, and it's a, it's a different way of thinking. And, and if typically, the typical solar farm, and, and we're, we're only partway through in understanding all this, but it's probably going to be ten to twenty acres, and you take that times the eight hundred dollars, and, and then all of a sudden, it's, it looks more possible, you know, more reasonable that, that that's what they're talking about, you know? Ten to sixteen thousand dollars a, a project per year. Uh, and, but ultimately, we really think, just as, as the people who've been involved in the fight against the, the wind turbines in our community, in our township, which thankfully, so far, we've been fairly successful with. And now they're coming in and, and, and offering people sixty thousand dollars a year on their, on their eighty acres or hundred and sixty acres and not being, you know, that, that not really being honest, not being transparent, not explaining it to, to where people really understand. They're allowing the imagination to run, uh, just to get that signature on, signature on that piece of paper, so they can do, it's so they can continue their project, so they can bring it up through where we live. And, uh, we just want, we would really appreciate, really ask and ask you please to do your homework on this and to think through the, uh, the, the whole process. And I don't know if either any of you have talked directly or if a, if a representative of the company has talked to you. You'd think they would have to at some point, since you're the decision makers here. Uh, but if you, if they haven't, I, well, I'd seek it out and, and get them to be transparent and really real with you. Appreciate your time.
Thanks, John.
Thanks, John.
Any other public comment? Okay, uh, hearing none. Uh, let's move on to our engineers update. J D.
Good morning. I'm J D, county engineer. Got the regular update and then something special today from, uh, the folks at Iowa State. Thanks, sir. Thank you. I do have some photographs that may be different than the ones that were sent that were accompanied the, uh, the email transmission. But I'll just start with our regular update. Did everybody get it? Yesterday evening? Good. So we are outlaying, given the dry conditions, most of them are on the dirt, getting the dirt ready for the fall harvest time. We were hauling rock to the districts yesterday. Today, we're hauling rock over the stretch of auto seal that was done yesterday. This is another thirty passes of roller, except we are substituting instead of the purpose-built roller, we're substituting four trucks in echelon with a sixteen, eighteen ton load traffic in the stretch of Brandyville that was auto sealed yesterday. I've worked on Upland Avenue, open repair that are in their price farms. Yesterday, today they're working, uh, to move a, a large railroad tank car on P Avenue closer to the bridge where it belongs. Got one more mowing on the south. They're still at Nyman, and I've got a tree trimming crew in various locations, including responding to a complaint. Moving to the shop. Number two motor grader has been rebuilt this past this fall. And it's, is at the shop and the motor grader was at the shop yesterday afternoon, put a sticker, I saw stickers on it, and it was headed off to the
All right.
District, uh, this morning.
Yes.
He's got a, a special road that's been kind of waiting out there in dirt so he can stick the blade in the ground and put the fuel to it. It's a better way to break things in. Did a service grip on motor grader number one last week. Winter service of our file trucks continue. Jamie and one of our truck drivers left for Omaha earlier this morning to pick up the truck tractor. They took up the check and bring back my truck tractor that we're going to belly it up with. And, and we've done motor, a repair on the younger motor tractor. That's when we put it still. So that brings me to the, uh, the engineer part. Made the construction effort with the Nats Base Stabilization and Auto Seal Project. We've talked about that for months, been working on it for weeks. Yesterday, they did the first lift of auto seal at the Brandyville section, about a mile and six tenths. Today, they moved back to North Borough to that nearly four miles there that was done last week, previous week, with the first layer of seal. So they're going back with the second layer of auto seal. And researchers from Iowa State, who I had with me today, and they'll make their introductions later, have been collecting their data and, and such things. We've also, we'll return to them. But we did, uh, we did do fall seal. We did pavement maintenance with fog seal on J twenty, the US seventy-one east to the county line and then through into Taylor County all the way over to Iowa one forty-eight. Page County's been doing fog seal. Okay, that's, uh, that's part of J twenty from the Taylor County side looking at the county line. You can see untreated surface on the westbound lane and the north side, the right side, and, uh, initial treatment on the, on the left side. It'd be, it's a little hard to see on this, on this photograph, but up on the top, at the right, does anybody have a ledger pointer thing?
Nope, I don't.
Anyway, right, yes, right there is a, is a previous application in Page County. I did give a closer picture for it. So that was done. We also did a short piece of East Gang Street in Brandyville with the fog seal. This is a useful pavement preservation technique that we've used in, in Page County since 2013. I've been doing fog seals since 2008 in other counties. Other project developments are continuing, the title sheets, the plan sets for the C F L and H M A res servicing for next year have been uploaded to the DOT system. Detour route agreement with the DOT on the Essex North Bridge there on N forty-one. DOT is going to replace the bridge on fifty-nine over the Eastish Nabata in 2023. And they're going to use aisle forty-eight and J fourteen as double A running through Essex as the detour route, the official detour. Of course, the local detour will be on A Avenue over the bridge. We just did one with Shandover. But, and they'll be, they'll they'll paint the pavement, they'll replace the signs. And there's going to be a traffic light at the Essex North Bridge there on N forty-one, because they only want one. It's a load limited bridge, so they only want one truck on at a time. Had a good meet meeting last week down at St. Joe. Well attended. We, we didn't have one the previous year in 2020. And in the coming month, we're going to formalize a farm-to-market system modification and take it to the meeting in December. Farm-to-market review board meets in December, and so we need to do our our preparatory work in October. Where that, it's a, it's a, related to a project near Yorktown, where we're getting rid of the bridge and substituting a piece of roadway for that. Questions about the update? Hearing none, I'd like to move to, uh, to the, the auto seal and, and base stabilization project on the twenty-fourth, which I think was Monday. We had some engineers from the neighboring counties from Taylor and Lucas come over and watch us grind cement powder in. It's not that yet. There. So we're down at the Brandyville Bridge, going westbound, they're grinding cement powder into the face. Lucas got engineer and his assistant and the Tenter County Assistant came over to look at our work. This is the same picture. But now, now we have a bit of, of, uh, of a dog and pony show here with some fine research out of Iowa State. You know, where all the good engineers go and learn things and, uh, so I'm pleased to introduce for, uh, all the research guys up here and, and tell, uh, tell the board what we're doing.
Thank you very much. So, uh, I'm Emily Gibbon from Iowa State University PhD student. So we are having some research projects. So another research project, so we are doing some work in Pace County. So basically, primarily focusing on our fossil in two different streets. One is J fifty-five, another is M forty-four. So as you see, the title of the project is evaluation of what has been surfacing for low-volume routes in Iowa. So we are doing the phase two study right now that has comprehensive laboratory evaluation and also characterization, and that includes the field implementation also. So we did some laboratory characterization at Iowa State, and based on our laboratory finding, we are building some test section here in Pace County to see how much improvement we can provide based on our laboratory studies. So this actually one of the road here in J fifty-five will be different section considering different rock and also oil application rate to see if the, any performance improvement we could get out of this, uh, research study or not. So if you go to the next slide, please. So auto seal, if I just say briefly, this is the, one of the bituminous surface treatment technique that was actually invented in Norway in that during nineteen sixties. So, and because this has been widely used in different part of Europe and also Australia and New Zealand, uh, the primary reason that is this is very cost-effective and also local aggregate and the locally available equipment can be used to, uh, construct the auto seal surface. So the primary objective of the research study actually to establish the specification for the auto seal construction in United States. So so far, we see many, uh, auto seal site in different, uh, countries include Europe and also Australia, New Zealand, and some of the African countries. But we don't have that specification in United States, so we are trying to develop the specification for our, for here, and that includes the quality control, all those steps during the construction process. Also, we are trying to do the laboratory evaluation and the field implementation of the project. So this is the quick summary of, uh, the different auto seal site that we constructed in Iowa in different county. So we have some auto seal site in Cherokee County, Bocana County, and Luisa County, also in the Ringland County. And the other county includes the Winnebago County, Humboldt County, and last year we did some auto seal in the Clinton County also. So these are the picture actually from the previous auto seal site that we constructed in Winnebago County. So this is the surface previously looked like we milled the surface. So, and then this is the image that shows how we do the auto seal construction, spreading the, uh, bitumen binder and then spreading rock, doing some pneumatic rubber tire roller compaction, some steel roller compaction, and after like, uh, two days after the single lift of construction, we see surface look like this. And if we go like, uh, six months after the construction, the surface look like becoming H M S surface, like normal asphalt road. And as the day passes, the road started becoming like a asphalt road. So this is the road picture after thirty months after the single day construction. So these are the some tests we do always for the performance evaluation of the auto seal that includes lightweight deflectometer test to measure the strength, how much strength the parcel can provide us. And we also do the dust measurement, but as you know, the, the measure, the problem with the gravel road or the low-volume road is that produce lot of dust. So we honor, reduce the dust of the road when the traffic moves. So this is the dust one result, and this is the friction result of the road surface. We can move on. So this is the some roughness measurement of the road. As you see, the time passes, the roughness reduces of the auto seal surface. So this is the potential road surface in Pace County. This is the two road, J fifty-five, M forty-four. We, that's what we are trying to implement our research project here. Uh, move forward. So this is the J fifty-five road, and we built some test section over there. So we built it three different sections considering three different application rate out of our laboratory finding from Iowa State University to see the performance difference between the different section of the road. So, and the difference here for the different section, that is the application rate for aggregate and also the binder. Move on.
So back up that, through this slide, so you'll notice that this is the whole slide. See, there by the bridge, we have section one, and those are aggregate rates of thirty-eight pounds per square yard and thirty-five gallons of oil per square yard. Section one, that's over there by the bridge on the left. Now, and so that's the test section that we provided for the researchers. We, I asked them to move that to the east end, the northeast end of the project. We did one by the bridge and used the, a larger, the forty-seven pound bag unit and the four tenths, you know, gallon per, per square yard for the, the majority of the road, that's our design value. We moved the test section to the northeast, so that should it fail at some future time, we'll be, we'll be working on J fifty-five continuing to the east, you know, in, in future years. So should it, should it fail, we can, uh, better, better fix it. And then they were accommodating with that quest, so, you know. We also have a control section, we have a control section that extends the auto seal pass where we've done full deck reclamation and treated the base with cement powder. Page County's work is the first opportunity to have, to have the auto seal and stabilize the base with cement powder. They've put it on just gravel roads, they've put it on old seal coats, they've put it on in Winnebago. The pictures were of an old, pretty well deteriorated hot mix asphalt. And of course, we've, uh, we've chipped seals over asphalt. It's a long time pavement maintenance step. Except, you know, our auto seal is thick because it's more accurate, longer side there. Go ahead, John.
Yes, thank you. So next. So these are the some base stabilization work on the J fifty-five. So they are putting the cement powder over there to stabilize to make the base layer more stronger. So go ahead. And then we did some testing over there on the stabilized base section. So we determined that, uh, we did this E P genomic component detector test. Also, we did the lightweight deflectometer test to measure the strength and also the California bearing ratio value on the stabilized base section. And then this is the, this is our vehicle from Iowa State that has high-speed profiler. So it can measure the roughness of the road, like how funky the road is. So we measured the roughness of the road on the M forty-four street after the first layer of the auto seal construction. And then these are the some work we showed, did button on M forty-four speed during the auto seal construction. So we tried to calibrate the equipment to make the proper application rate for the, both for the rock and also for the oil. So we did kind of calibration of the equipment to, uh, to have our application rate properly working over there. So, and then these are the some construction picture. So they are providing like, uh, spraying the oil, spreading the aggregate on top of oil, and then providing the tire compaction, rubber tire compaction. And this is the right side picture. We see the ISF team over there. We are supervising and seeing the construction of our product. And then this is the video, so that we taken during the construction. So I'm not sure if can be played.
This is taken from drone.
Yeah, this has been taken from drones, so. Uh, any other videos?
Next time you visit, we'll see if you can bring some additional bandwidth so that we don't get.
Even further.
Mm-hmm.
You put down a lot more oil in this this application that the font will, the font will point zero five, this is point four.
Yeah.
Shows forty, back ten more.
I think that's all. So actually we have a spring and we are capturing the videos. Very good. Go ahead. Next slide. So this is the surface after seven days of fast leap of auto seal construction. So this picture was taken yesterday, actually, in the Pocano Street. So over there today, they are doing the second year, second year of auto seal construction today. So we also go there and perform this work and everything. And this is the auto seal construction from yesterday, so we took some picture email, we did again some testing, roughness, heat management, L W D C P all the thing. And J fifty-five street, this is the other street. So this is from last day, yesterday picture. So as you see, they are spraying oil, spraying aggregate and back there, two rubber tire, half compression. And right side, you see the steel rod that is providing compression from the center. So that's that's the situation. Next one. So these are the proposed test we'll be doing on those two streets for the next one years. So the interval should be like seven days, one month, three months, six months, and twelve months after uh like certain interval of this time, you will perform those list of the test on those section and to measure the performance of the auto seal. So that has means our aggregate loss from L W D test to measure roughness of the road, means our dust, how much dust it's producing. And also we'll measure the speed resistance, that is the friction of the road that is important for the rubber uh tire friction of the vehicle to have properly affect the rate. And then we'll do the visual which is some of the auto seal over the back. And I will see if we will keep monitoring the performance of the auto seal both from the M forty-four and the J fifty-five. Thank you. Any questions or anything?
Questions for us?
No, uh, thanks for all your work and um we uh do you anticipate this research will help other counties understand the process better is of course, your goal is probably to further your your education, but uh how?
You know, professor in charge of the of the research, you want to help make sure and make it weatherable, the galleries and and uh share what we're doing, you know, with the state, the state office.
That's great.
Yeah, wonderful.
Yeah. Oh, you did great. No, thank you. Thank you very much.
Hi, this is Alio Jaylon, professor from Iowa State University. Can I just provide very quick comments?
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you. JD, thank you so much for again, all your assistance with our research study. And I've known JD for a good number of years. He's an outstanding county engineer. It's always a joy to work with him. So we greatly appreciate again Page County making this, uh, you know, the auto seal projects as part of our research study. As uh my PhD student Giban mentioned earlier, this study, uh, the construction projects taking place in Page County will be of great help to produce, uh, come up with a specification. So other Iowa counties and other states in the country can actually benefit from this. As you can see, it significantly reduces the dust emissions and provides a much safer road to travel on. So those are huge benefits and uh it's been a great joy again to work with the county engineering staff. So we greatly appreciate all the collaboration and uh thank you for all your assistance. And I'm the project principal investigation. If there are any additional questions, I'll be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions, gentlemen? No, it's exciting. Thank you for spending time in Page County. Appreciate it. Okay, uh, that was a eye opening. You don't get that kind of a look at construction.
Yeah.
So um if we could now, let's move to John Schwab, our executive director of Page County Conservation. Uh, John, good morning to you.
Morning, gentlemen. Uh, yeah, pretty much on ears because we were able to raise enough funds for the walleye project to get them stocked to wrap park for hopefully here in the next month or so. Um, so since it is the conservation reserve fund, please see the board's authorization to to spend it.
How much do you spend?
Uh, one thousand five hundred twelve dollars and fifty cents, and that'll get us five hundred and fifty fish roughly sixteen inches long.
I'd make a motion that we allow them to purchase the fish.
All right, give me a number again, one thousand five.
Five hundred twelve dollars and fifty cents.
And that was how many fish? Five?
Yeah, five hundred and fifty fish. It'll be sixteen inches. That's the most fish we could put in that D N R recommends.
Okay. Well, if you have any extra, throw them over the road into my pond.
Yeah, in your pond, yeah.
So walleye uh increases the the attraction for fishing, does?
Definitely. We've had quite a few people that have been asking about walleye. That we were just able to work with D N R and they pretty much said, hey, if you can raise the money, you know, well, we'll give you the authorization to stock it. Um, it's just since rap was under five hundred acres of water, D N R doesn't stop.
Got you. Okay. Is there anything from Green Plains? I know they have shown interest in the past. Are there any of their fish that they've been raising that we can pick up from them?
We're actually going to either late October, early November, uh, the Shand tourism committee I was talking to. They're actually gonna have a one day trout fish out out there.
Uh-huh.
Um, so yeah, Green Plains is gonna come in and stock it with trout every day and their people cut their fish.
Right.
Have a chance to catch a fish there.
Super, super. That'll be exciting.
Yep.
Yeah. How's, oh, I was just gonna say, how's the boat dock, the boat ramp thing going? Are you beating any on that?
It's still a mess. Um, we're still, we're losing a lot of water still at rap. Just uh we figured out about every month and a half or so, we're losing about six inches.
Yeah.
Um, we put, you know, about three thousand dollars in earlier this year to fix the boat ramp and it was good for a couple of weeks, but once the water kept coming down.
Yeah.
It's the point where if you're careful, you can launch a boat, but anything size, we have record.
Yeah.
So what kind, is it, is it the the dryness that's the cause, the root cause, or you have some leakage somewhere?
No, it's the dryness which is, yeah, which is the biggest issue.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, all all of ours at a rap are starting to drop pretty good.
Because if I'm not mistaken, those, all that water out there leaches with the level of the river.
Correct.
And leaches both ways, so therefore, when the river is way down to where you can walk across it, everything else.
Rap's gonna be down too.
Yeah.
Well, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion about the the request? Here and I call for a vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Um, do you know when they're going to be placing the fish out there?
Um, he had said early fall, so it should be pretty much, pretty much.
I'd be interested in being out there that day to watch. I'd like to see the walleye.
Okay, definitely.
I've never fished walleye, so I think that'd be interesting to see what they look like.
It's fun.
And what they'll look like bigger, so.
Yeah, just don't don't grab it in the mouth like a fish. You'll only do that once or twice.
They have sharp teeth?
They got teeth.
Yeah, they have teeth. Okay.
I had uh someone ask me over the weekend whether the conservation board had any interest in purchasing the golf course at Asics adjacent to to uh Pierce Creek. So I just would pass that along to you.
I I will pass that along to my board. Okay. You can talk about it. Okay.
Might be a nice out of green space.
It definitely would. We were, I've looked at it before and I used to golf out there. It was open. I just if it was connected to Pierce, I think it would be kind of a no brainer.
How much, how much spaces are between the two? I can't remember anymore. I haven't been out there for a long time in the golf.
I don't know off the top of my head. It's it's two pretty good sized far fields.
Yeah.
All right. Well, thank you, John.
I appreciate it.
So we've hit kind of a a lull. We've got Mark Schaefer on at the nine thirty.
We want to move minutes and.
Yeah, and communication. So let's uh, why don't we go through the the bills first?
Okay. Those were, well, I think this is, just needs to sign. That's just you.
Oh, that's just me.
I think so. Correct?
On these two?
Yeah, yeah.
So then.
I don't think we've got any bills.
Okay.
Correct? No bills. Yeah.
Okay. So then, um, we have no claims to approve, so let's go to board communication. Uh, next week, it's my intent to have a A T V, U T V ordinance for us to consider. It's an evening meeting. And uh I had Carl look at it last week. I have some more work to do on it. Should be able to have it ready for Tuesday evening. Uh, I was trying to remember, listening to Jane there on uh the potential solar ordinances. We had, we had looked at some templates at one point. I'm trying to remember if that was before you came on.
I think so. I think that's a, I, this team has come up with my meeting and council boss and it one of the Isaac, several different guys from all over. I mean, they were going through this right now. I caught the one, I got his card on the calling. Who's in it, like they're doing it and they're writing one.
You're right.
Right now, he's looked at a bunch of history knowledge laws and called in to see what. He, his big thing he get point out was the decommissioning is what he was really digging on.
Hmm. On the solar scale.
Solar deal, the part, that part of the ordinance, but that stuff's pretty.
Some of the, some of the interesting comments that I've heard from people. Um, one of the areas out west that they've been doing a lot in Arizona and different places like that is it defines them to where they can be over parking lots. Where they can be used in hospital parking lot, shopping center parking lot.
Shade.
Well, shade, but also where it doesn't tie up any, and it's already a flat area.
Yeah.
Uh, it's one of the things that, you know, that they suggested and that that gets more into the communities have to be more involved, the cities. Uh, but it's something that we can also look at maybe working on with our community efforts. It made good sense to me. I I just don't know about if the companies like that liability of having them where somebody can.
Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, but apparently out west it's working. Uh, I just got that from a couple that was in from Arizona and were had heard about the issue in Fremont and here. And just wanted to make sure that that we knew that it was working out there, so.
So the the Fremont County project, um, well, they just passed their order.
Well, I don't think it's, has it passed completely?
Oh, maybe.
Well, I don't know. I was trying to remember that. I know they had a meeting on September first. I don't know if they've got this a final reading or if they've still got one more. I can't remember.
I'm not sure.
You know, if the landfill, we may have to recycle TVs. We do that town every year. It costs a lot of money. You get it? It's like they don't even really want the TVs because they're so expensive to recycle. And that was kind of what the guy up there I was talking to, he thought, you know, it's costly to get rid of that panel on their own. It's super expensive.
Unless they've had another meeting on September first, they have their first reading.
Their first reading.
And I don't know if they'll have, I presume, three. And their biggest discussion was on the height limitations, fifteen or twenty-five feet. Uh, they're still working on it. Um, if I run into uh Ray Connell, you want me to see if I can, maybe he could share with us, the three of us, the what they're using.
Fremont County?
Just to have it sent us.
Yeah, that I I'd like. I I had gotten one from the uh Office of Rural Affairs. They had a template and I'll see if I can.
Exactly.
Test through that. But um, you know, the the fact of the matter is, is that these are again private agreements, so you have landowners making whatever decisions. I I still think it's prudent from a decommission standpoint.
Yeah.
To have that protection in there, but but there there are solar developments, as I understand it, that uh are in places where there are no ordinances. That uh there, the greatest between the private landowner.
Yeah. Well, and yeah, and one of the big things is, is if uh you know, depending on what a farmer has for activities on cattle, hogs, whatever, who knows how much of a unit C will put up without, you know, so. And I know there's several in the area, you know, smaller ones, they, you know, how, you know, that's.
So I remember one of the, one of the wind developers, I think it might have been from Inverge back when wind was first starting to be talked about at Page County, somebody that you would expect to know something said that they believe that the southern tier of Iowa County was prime
For solar.
For solar. And I don't, you know, to Jane's point, it's hilly and I I guess I don't know how how that works either.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Uh, something else Corey asked earlier, I just went on the annex film and talking about what's going on over there.
Well, we haven't.
Wiring or stuff. Oh, for uh electrical or inter, both of us. Are they kind of working on, we're in there, what's the plan there?
Well, we're gonna try to get H G M back here. We we need to do some electrical upgrades in the upstairs before it could be occupied. And uh, but H G M, we had a meeting, they got scheduled last Tuesday. And then uh everybody that was gonna go to it realized when we we had the four county meeting, so it had to be canceled. And uh I reached out to Kim. She was gonna get her calendar this week and figure out, but the the electrical part is just to get it up to code in that second floor. And then wiring, you're you're using your, you're getting some cat cables and things. Yeah, and so that's, there's just a lot of moving pieces, you know, that'll help this building region. Came and took a tour of space. They may have interest in uh renting that from us, some space from us up there. Uh, but again, we we gotta sit down and develop a plan. So uh we, you know, when H G M originally came in, they're gonna do a total remodel and it was very expensive. And then we didn't move with that plan and we did, we covered up the tile with carpet, we repainted to make it for public health and it it really is working well for them. And it, and so I think the the thought process is to do a, do a minimal maintenance type thing where it's can safely be occupied. And I and I do think it will mean that we'll have to get some sort of a lift.
Hmm.
Uh, live occupied.
And probably handicapped accessible bathroom on each floor. Those are the two main things. The lift was just to meet the guidelines for the bathrooms and things. So the rest, the rest wasn't as major. We power was the only question was making sure with the lift that we've got enough power to work it. So that's what we were waiting on. That's where we needed them back down just to finalize that thought, so we could then start moving forward on the rest.
Well, Corey, you said like the internet hookup, you want it to be separate basically or not? If it's running out?
So and I and I have on my list of things due to contact the region. I don't know what kind of timetable they're on for developing this ACT team that would require. that would require some physical space. And I know they looked at another property in Clorinda. I think they're pretty firm on wanting to have an office for this ACT team in, in Clorinda and Page County, preferably Clorinda. And then I think they're on the northern edge, they're looking somewhere up in Monona County so that they, you know, kind of are able, they have an ACT team in Council Plus, but out of the far reaches, it's a little bit harder to, to work. So.
Is that meeting tonight in Shenandoah, over there at the, at the veterans?
I didn't receive anything.
I didn't receive.
I think they must have made an email. I think it's tonight.
Because she was gonna send everything to all three of us and I didn't receive.
I think I saw that.
We can call.
Maybe check on that. I feel like I saw that. I think it might be tonight.
Yeah, I didn't.
I don't remember. Maybe they just sent it to me. Want to take care of it for that? Yeah. I think it's tonight. Let me check.
Let's see, see what else is where. Will this call? Yes, Janet, this is Chuck Forrest. How are you this morning? Well, it's been a while. Hey, we were just discussing, is your board meeting tonight?
The, that, the one regarding the.
Oh, oh, they, okay. The suicide prevention, I'm sorry. Is that, are they meeting tonight? Okay, okay, thank you. Oh, good, good. It's, seems like it just never goes away, does it? She does, okay. What, what time is that? Six thirty, okay. Could you, could you remind her to, to send out the kind of a reminder to the three of us? Because Jacob remembered, but neither, none of us got a reminder and I'm not sure who's gonna be standing. Is it, is it at your building then, Janet? Okay, all right, great. Well, thank you very much, you're appreciated. Okay, you did the same. All right, bye bye. Fellas, I'd love to, but I can't.
I, I can unless you want to go.
I want the one.
I should be able to go.
Okay, I apologize.
Six thirty at the VA, okay? How long did it last, the last half an hour, forty-five minutes?
Four hours. No water. It wasn't very long.
Okay.
Okay, so you go to the.
I will plan on going to that.
So other board communication meetings? Let's see, it's kind of a meeting week for me. We had the EMA meeting on Thursday evening. I sent out an email. He was asking permission to move forward on some safety duties and his commission was not at all for that. So it's kind of back to Plan B. And then, let's see, Monday, yesterday, we had two meetings. One board meeting at Zion in Atlantic. Nothing really big out of that meeting, just kind of a wrap up of the, the budget year. And in that field, mental health and Medicaid reimbursement, somebody's changed their computer system again. So nobody's talking with the various providers. And so I think their state's about three months behind on three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a payment. So it's just a never ending.
Yeah, I just don't understand how the world survives.
I don't either.
What's gonna happen when the world ends, is all that money gonna go?
I don't know. In a hole somewhere. And then last night attended, there was a legislative reception up in Red Oak, Nishna Productions. And Grassley and Ernst represented were there, Mark Costello was there. And then members of the Nishna Board were there. And, you know, their, their appeal too is basically these Medicaid reimbursements that are woefully behind and inadequate. On one service that Nishna provides, they're losing over two hundred thousand dollars a year after a three point five, five percent increase in Medicaid reimbursements. But that's the first Medicaid reimbursement increase since 2013. So when you, you go eight years without any, kind of, then there's quite a gap. So, and, you know, Costello was, was, did a good job on getting at three point five five. He was pretty active in that, but it's still that. So those are meetings that, that I had last week. All right, so minute wise, I had one, one suggestion on clarification. And let me find it. It, it deals with the issue from the Wellness Committee. See if I, I had my copy at home marked up and I forgot to bring it.
That's on the second, third page.
Yeah, third page. What, yeah, it's in that paragraph that starts with Morris stated the Wellness Committee and it's down. On a motion by Holmes, seconded by Armstrong, the board moved to decline. I would ask that we insert, the board unanimously moved to decline backfilling funds.
Yeah, yeah.
And is that doable? Did you find it interesting?
Yeah, I would say yes.
Hello?
Hello, Mark.
Hi, Mark.
How you doing? Hey, they didn't put your mouth to sleep, did they?
No, no, no. It was, I just had some cleaning done and I, and I thought I was gonna have to have a root canal. I don't have to have that, so that's even better yet.
Well, life is good. Life is good. Not, there's not a lot worse in the world than a root canal, I tell you that. Well, taking time out, we're a couple of minutes early. So that if anybody was wanting to join for nine thirty, we, we're gonna ask, first of all, before we go to you, Mark, for a motion to approve our minutes from September twenty first.
So moved.
With the one addition.
With the one correction, with the one addition of unanimous.
And seconded by Holmes, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries. So, well, shoot. Mark, we really appreciate you coming on board and visiting with us. The reason why I wanted to have you come on is to talk just a little bit and get, and give our board a little more heads up. This was a discussion point I want to add as well. Last night at a legislative reception for Nishna Productions, which they're, they provide services to developmentally disabled and disadvantaged citizens. And they're an organization of more than a hundred. And they're looking at all of the new regulations that they're having to live with as it relates to COVID and President Biden's executive orders. And I know you've been really involved deeply in that and with some of your other clients over on the eastern side of the state. So I wanted you to give our board kind of an update on where this is currently, where it may head, and kind of the latest news as you see it.
Okay. Well, first of all, I hope that everybody's doing well, health wise and everything like that. And, and so President Biden came out with the new guidelines. And it talks about the federal guideline. And he wants to have a mask or a fully vaccinated program or testing. And if you, if you read the article, then it talks about, the OSHA is gonna enforce the fourteen thousand dollars per case. Well, people are, people are having Zoom meetings about this, attorneys are getting involved in everything. So I called my friend at OSHA consultation and I asked her, what do you know about this? And she said that it's coming out and it's gonna be, it's gonna be forty-five to sixty days before OSHA really knows what the true guidelines are. So, and here, here's another thing, is that, that they, they don't know who's gonna pay for testing. And they don't know if there's gonna be federal money there. They don't know if there's gonna be state money there to do the testing at all. But the, the thing right now is that, that if OSHA goes out to your facility after forty-five to sixty days, they're, they have to ask you about your COVID plan. And it's gonna be mandatory. And they're gonna ask you, hey, are you doing fit testing? Do you have a COVID plan and things like that? So, so if you're doing all that, and Tom had set that up in the past, that certain people were, were tested, I think you're gonna be okay. But there might be some written programs that, that might have to be adapted with this new guidelines coming.
So forty-five to sixty days before we know what the rules are, kind of like the art money that was released several months ahead of the rule. And they keep getting, you know, keep pushing that back on new developments. So the same probably is gonna be the case here as it relates to OSHA regulations.
The federal dollars that we received is very minimal and rare.
About three hundred grand a year is what we were seeing on federal dollars is what JD told me.
That was, and this sounds pretty.
So there, the, the rules are that everyone. Well, that's what they're trying to sort out, what, what the ruling is, either vaccinated or if they're not vaccinated, submitting to, to regular testing. I know at the legislative coffee last night, they were talking about Nishna Productions. Expectation was that they were gonna have to test all their employees on Monday and that they would be good to go for that week. And then next Monday, they'd get tested again. Now, I, you're working with a client over, what, in Lee County that, because of situation, if I understood you right, they're testing twice weekly, correct, Mark?
Well, I am, I'm sitting, it is, actually, it is a nursing home in the Quad Cities. And because of the guidelines for nursing homes, they're doing it twice a week. They do it, they're doing it today. They do it on Tuesdays and Thursdays every week. And it's costing them between three thousand and four thousand dollars every time they do it. And the state, the state has money to cover that cost. And they have to test all the residents and all the employees at the nursing home. But nobody, nobody really knows for sure that if there's gonna be money for this testing. The, the, and the kicker is that I heard somebody say about that, that federal money. The, so there's two ways to look at this. You get federal money, but also if you have a hundred employees or more on your payroll, is you're gonna, you, you will come under this guideline then too.
Which I think we're safe on the hundred employees, unless you start counting township trustees who aren't really employees. I don't think we have a hundred employees, but the OSHA tie in will probably lock us into some of this regulation, I guess.
Now, here, here's something that you three board members need to think about. And Clinton County ended up doing this, some other counties are doing this, is they told their, they told their staff that if staff are in a vehicle together, riding someplace, they, they have to wear a mask.
I thought last week we kind of agreed we weren't gonna force anybody to vaccinate. That's kind of the general consensus. Then, um, general, I, I don't really care what OSHA says. There's no way in the world I will ever vote to force anybody, any employee, ever. I don't care what, go by federal government.
Forcing, forcing, I, I, I don't know. I, my question would be, my question would be, what about the ARP monies? Would that, would that make a difference too as far as, will they be able to incorporate? Since those are federal dollars, will they be able to?
Probably slow down on some of them to see what they're gonna do, so it's not extorting, so.
Well.
If, if that's a, a case or a chance, maybe slow down on some of that.
I guess it's all a matter of opinion, Jacob. And, and, you know, we as a board, we have our own views, but we also have to gather views of what's going to be best for the county too. So we've got to be careful on what we say and, and approach this. We've got to really wait until all the information is there before we make decisions. So I would sure hate to give up two point nine million dollars of things to better our county because I don't want to encourage people to spend dollars on testing. I don't think there's anything in this that says you have to be. And I, I don't know, they haven't decided on what the vaccination is going to be, if it's going to be testing or if it's vaccinated. So I think that there's.
You just kind of see it coming. That's what it seems to be the point we're having towards. Far as it'd be pretty, for federal dollars, pretty very cautious.
Well, it's, uh, you know, we, we're, we're taught all through our life, at some point, all of us have an authority. And sometimes the rules aren't fair. Sometimes the rules aren't to our liking. But in a society driven by, by rules and layers of authority, you have to, I think, consider, you know, sometimes you, in life, you just have to play the game. And, you know, you can take it to a biblical standpoint, render it a Caesar when it's Caesars. And sometimes Caesar's.
Is your body Caesar's? No.
No, but. And you're. That's not in all of my body.
You know, it's your choice, but, you know, individual liberty is the whole. Don't, no, everything is based on, our country is founded on individual liberty. And to force somebody into something with risk is, is, is. You gotta draw a line in money, you know, when you start saying, well, if there's enough money involved, we have to buckle. That's prostitution, that is. That's, that's, that's putting into, if there's enough money, then we, when we give up individual liberty. This is crazy and somebody's gonna stand up against all this stuff. So let's start small. I don't think we'll be going to ones, but. OSHA, the strange way to even come about this, that's like a backdoor way to do this, strange way, but.
Well, again, we need to continue to follow developments, know what the rules are, what the boundaries are so that we can make decisions that we think are, are best for our, our populace.
And just, just remember that, that we, we have to wait forty-five, sixty days. And these, these are the guidelines that they want us to follow. And, and.
Whoops, we lost you, Mark.
So I think we all have to take a, take a step back and remember it's forty-five to sixty days. Let's wait until the final guidelines come out and then talk about it more.
That sounds good.
Sounds like a plan.
Mark, can you send us, you, you made a reference to some things that Tom had done. Do you have those in your file?
I, I have some of them, uh, that he, he, he set up a, he set up a COVID plan for the. that he, he, he set up a, he set up a COVID plan for the county. And I think your, I think your health department, uh, I, I know they have to wear, they're wearing N ninety-five masks. So, so those people were actually fit tested too.
I would be interested if if you have what you have and then I'll look through what Melissa would have in her files too, to see what else we've got. I'd be interested if you want to just copy us, uh, what you have that Tom had done, just all three of us, that'd be good. So we have it for record. Thank you.
Yep, I, yep, I will.
That'd be awesome.
Thanks, Mark.
Hey, Mark, uh, on a future agenda, we're gonna discuss, uh, how we handle, uh, the whole created when Tom left employment and how we backfill those needs. So that's still on our, still on our radar and, uh, we're gonna try to accelerate getting through that.
Okay. Okay.
Well, hey.
Anybody have any other questions or?
Um, is there anything in the next, uh, thirty days that, uh, you see that has to be done uh, or worth additional risk in any way, shape or form?
No, I, what, uh, I think we have to do is look at, we need to get back on training. And I, the, your worker comp company, IMWCA, has a great, great website for training. And a lot, a lot of my cities and counties are using that for their training now. So I will go in there and look at what type of training needs to get done for you guys.
Perfect. Appreciate that.
Yep.
Very, very much. All right, well, we should go celebrate an old root canal. Uh, have a cherry soda or something.
I will, I will. So, thanks you guys. I'll talk to you later.
Okay, thanks, Mark. Mark, appreciate it.
Okay, take care. Bye.
Yeah, bye bye. All right, so, yeah, we just have to follow and see what, what comes down. Anything else before we adjourn?
I make motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
All right, motion to adjourn, seconded by Holmes. All in favor, say aye. Hey, thank you for joining us today.